All right. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:03. If you can rise and say the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
All right, so before we start our public hearing, which we have first, I would like to acknowledge we have two school board members on the phone. When I say your name, if you can say if you're here and alone. Dan Cludier?
I am here. I am alone.
Thank you. Janelle O'Brien?
Here and alone.
Thank you. So we're going to have a public hearing tonight pursuant to RSA 19820B, public hearing relative to receiving additional funding through School Meals Emergency Operating Cost Reimbursement Program. So Scott or Brian, you want to talk about that?
Mr. Gross. Sure. We had gotten some good news that I think we got about $26,000 from the federal government for our meals program, and it was supplemental aid that the federal government dispersed to all the states, and our share was that amount. So because it's more than $5,000, you have to accept, you know, that amount of money as revenue for the food service program.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
Was that amount again, Ms. Chair?
It's at $26,000?
Twenty-six thousand.
About, or is there, you have an exact number?
Yeah, I have to go pull up Megan's email, but Denise, would you happen to know what that amount was? Was it on the?
Was it an email from Megan?
Yeah, I'm going to just quickly check.
It was about five.
It was in the twenties. There it was.
I just don't know if we need the actual number for the motion later.
For the motion, yep. Good thought.
I'll tell you what, why don't you hold, I'll find the email, you can do it as another, when I do my business report, I'll get you that number.
Yep.
Okay?
Well, we have to adjourn this public hearing first.
You can still adjourn the meeting, yeah.
Okay. We don't have to approve it before we adjourn?
Okay, I have the number.
You have the number, okay.
Yeah. Twenty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome. Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
All right, so is there anything else on the reimbursement, Scott?
That's it.
All right. Any board members have questions for Scott? All right, so I will open to public comment on the public hearing. If there's any public comment on the public hearing, I'll open that. All right, see and none. So we need to accept the funds, so I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the funds as presented by our business administrator?
Okay, by Jared. Do I have a second?
Point of order?
Yes.
We're in a public hearing.
Correct.
We're supposed to make motions during a public hearing or subsequent to them?
We usually do them during, to accept the reimbursement, correct?
Okay. All right, I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion before I do roll call? Okay, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Shane, or Terry? Shane twice. Terry? And Heather, yes. All right, Terry. Motion accepted. So I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing. By Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny? I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, so we are adjourned.
May I make a comment? Janelle, can you please speak up or speak closer to the mic? You can barely be heard.
Yes, thank you. All right, so I am going to call the school board meeting to order at 7:07. And do we have any correspondence?
No, we don't.
All right. Commendations, good news. Caleb?
Just this past Saturday, I'd like to commend our new dance teacher, Miss Bernstein. She was responsible for the direction and also stage managing of this year's production of The Nutcracker at GHS, which went very well. We had at least two-thirds house, about the 3:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. shows, and there were about probably 35 kids who take either intro to dance or the Movement Dance Company classes here at the high school.
Nice. Thank you, Caleb. Is that all?
That is all for tonight, yes.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ginny.
I saw this notice that the future business, GHS future business leaders and the student council raised $2,500 for the New Hampshire Food Bank from their penny slam, which I think is a very interesting way to raise money. And maybe you could, do you?
Oh, yes, so it's one of our homecoming activities. Basically, there's a jar for each class, and you can, coins count for your class and dollars count against other people's classes. So you try to put coins in your own class's jar and dollars in other people's class's jar. It usually turns into a competition of who's the most negative, because the bills are just worth so much more.
Right.
And someone this year basically just, partway through, someone in the senior class got fed up and put $200 in each other's class's bins, and just, they were sunk from that moment.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ginny. Any other commendations, good news? Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to let the board know that tonight I went to the select board meeting, and I thank the fire chief and the DPW director for allowing us to do the testing at the transfer station, as well as thanking the fire department for all of the vaccine clinics. And as luck would have it, Chief Allen was already there, and he texted me afterwards saying how appreciative he was of those kind words.
Nice.
And, you know, I know that we wouldn't be able to do these clinics, the vaccine clinics, we wouldn't be able to do all the testing that we've done without the fire department's help. And then recently, by doing the rapid COVID testing at the transfer station, that required help from DPW, and the town has been nothing but helpful to us over the last, you know, year and a half dealing with this. So I just want, I just, I thank them on behalf of the district tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Shane, did you have?
I do not.
No? I thought your hand was up. All right, and I would like to add on to Caleb's, my family and I went to The Nutcracker Saturday night. Quite the dancer you are in the show, and they all did a great job. They worked really hard, so thank you for putting that on. All right, if there's no other commendations, good news, I will open to public comment, and I know we have two people here who would like to speak. So I know I talked to both of you ahead of time, just to let everybody know, when you come up, you'll stand at the, sit at the mic, say your name and address for our record, and you just state your comment. We do give you up to three minutes. This is not answer and question dialogue. Please be respectful of the board. So whomever would like to go first, you can come on up.
Ms. Chairman Chair, do we need to technically adjourn the public hearing?
We already did. You motioned to.
Ginny, would you just throw balls at me? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Good evening, school board members, Mr. Balki, everybody. Caleb, Janelle, learned your name. I'd like to thank everyone for their diligent work and efforts in keeping our children in school during the COVID-19 pandemic. My two sons attend MVMS, and I'm here tonight in support of wearing masks in school as a way of keeping our children in school. Our schools are a reflection of what's happening in the community, where the current COVID-19 transmission rate is substantial with highly contagious variants present. The physical and emotional strain that illness and contact tracing puts on families and school employees is immense. Wearing masks as a mitigation measure is an excellent way of avoiding illness, isolation, and quarantining. As a doctor of physical therapy, I have worked in healthcare for 31 years. I have extensive education and experience in universal precautions and PPE, personal protective equipment. Through the use of PPE, I've avoided getting contagious diseases such as AIDS, MRSA, and tuberculosis. My sister is a physical therapist who was contact traced for a COVID-19 exposure last year at the end of a workday, during which she and her patients all wore masks. Her symptoms started later that night, and she tested positive the next day. Every single one of her patients tested negative because they were protected through masking. Schools have many protective policies in place to keep children and staff safe. These policies are established by trained professionals with expertise in their respective fields. The police and fire departments help develop school policies for active shooter and fire situations respectively. Experts and professional organizations help schools develop internet safety and food preparation safety policies. School decisions and policies around health and wellness should likewise be developed and heavily influenced by recommendations from healthcare experts. The current recommendations for K-12 schools from the CDC, New Hampshire DHHS, Division of Public Health Services, and other medical organizations include indoor masking when physical distancing and cohorting are not possible regardless of vaccination status. My unvaccinated son contracted COVID-19 during the MVMS school outbreak in November when masks were optional. He was presymptomatic but tested positive during the school's weekly testing program. He wore a mask at school every day this year and compassionately recognized that even though he was exposed to someone most likely unmasked, his mask likely protected him from spreading it further. Everyone else in my household has so far tested negative. We are all vaccinated, followed isolation procedures, and wore masks. These mitigation measures work. My friend's son has missed nearly 30 days of school this year because of contact tracing and quarantining. This is avoidable. We can stop the spread of COVID-19 during this current period of substantial transmission rates and keep children in school through the use of proven methods recommended by experts. Thank you for your time and your dedication to our school and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just say your name and address?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Michelle Philippina, 10 Keith Drive in Goffstown.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, my name is Mark Yammerold. I live at 142 St. McGrath. I've been a member of this town for over 20 years. It'd be hard to follow up on what Michelle just said. I agree with everything that she has to say. One of the things that, I found out tonight that this isn't question and answer, but, you know, I guess it'll have to be rhetorical. We don't know, and I'm assuming this is true, we don't know how many kids are vaccinated in the schools. At my work, you know, we can report our vaccination rate, and they can make decisions based on that. We also can't social distance like we would if we, with the six-foot distancing requirements that the CDC requires in most of the areas of school. You know, one thing that I'd like to know is, and again, this is rhetorical, what is the logic behind not mandating masks in school? We have eight kids in GHS today that were, right after Thanksgiving, were tested positive. We have, we're on the cusp of a new surge. That's really all I kind of came here to say. I just wanted to understand the logic, but again, it's not question and answer, but those are kind of my comments. And Michelle did a very good job at helping everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you coming. So you both are more than welcome to stay and listen. Superintendent Balki will do a superintendent update, which could answer maybe some of your questions, or you can leave at any time. So if there's no other public comment, I will close it for tonight. And we are on to approving November 15th school board meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at them? Anybody see anything?
Most of the minutes.
Okay, by Ellen. Thank you, good night. I have a motion, do I have a second? By Ginny. Any discussion before I do roll call? All right, see and none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, and Heather, yes. So we have one abstention, the rest, yes. All right, so tonight we have Ms. Joyce Lewis presenting. If you want to come on up, you should have everything in your pocket. All right, did you want to add anything before?
No, I think we'll, Joyce is here to talk about two different topics, so I think we'll just hand the floor to her, and she can introduce and provide a little bit of a background on each.
So the first one that I want to speak about tonight is signs of suicide. You should have some handouts that tell you a little bit about the program. It's a suicide prevention program, and in New Hampshire, it's offered by a nonprofit called Connors Klein, and they are one of the approved partners of the New Hampshire DOE Office of Social and Emotional Wellness. Signs of Suicide is an evidence-based program for grades five through 12, and it teaches students how to identify the signs of suicide and depression in themselves and in others. What I like about, and what we like about Signs of Suicide is that it is a training program for middle school and high school. It has some parent information and online portals for parents and staff training, and it's all continuous. It all builds on the same concept of act, which is acknowledge, care, and tell, and it's really, uses the same language so that everyone's getting the same message in the community about suicide prevention. This program is designed to meet the requirements for staff and student training that's required by New Hampshire law 193J, and we are hoping to train staff in the spring and implement this program next fall in the middle and high school. Should I just go into the next one, or are there questions?
No, just a little more of the logistics, Joyce. I believe that in terms of, first of all, this is a topic that I think that we can't ever do enough. So this is a topic that is something that we have to always continuously work at. We have to always continuously train people, students, staff members, in the effort of providing as much mental health support as we can to our vulnerable at-risk students. We're looking at a seventh grade and ninth grade annual teaching of the signs of suicide, as well as, Joyce, our Second Step Counseling Program, our guidance program, also covers some of this for earlier grades. But specifically for the signs of suicide, you're looking at grade seven and grade nine, and that would be done annually for those groups, correct?
Right, we also have instruction in our health curriculum in 10th grade.
Is that 10th grade?
And that's the NAMI training, so we already have that and have been doing that for years. This is just to kind of do additional.
Yeah.
And after a rollout, there's also additional pieces that you can do with juniors and seniors as you provide them with tools before they go off to college, but the initial implementation would be the seventh and ninth grade.
So I think it makes sense to pause and separate the two topics that Mrs. Lewis is here to talk about. So on this one, this has our full support of administration, Joyce, and we've had a great team that's been working on identifying what program we wanted to bring in. We're thankful to Connors Klein because they're doing a lot of fundraising and funding of the, of the efforts and the initiative. So we would be looking for the board's approval to implement the Signs of Suicide program as presented.
Joyce, would you like me to pass this around?
Sure. I noticed one thing on the film that Joyce had in CNE, and a really important part of that film, which was, kids got together and, pardon me?
No, it's Dan unmuted.
Okay, just talking back to me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Was that, when kids sat together and talked about this, and somebody said, "Well, so-and-so said not to tell." And this film taught kids to say, "Well, if your friend is really sad and really depressed, then you need to tell somebody because they maybe get hurt, and it's not a bad thing to tell them." So it was really a good program, I thought, in that it told, like, even young children that if your friend says something to you that worries you, don't, you know, don't just keep it in and worry about it. And I myself know of a, of a young man who knew of something about his friend that disturbed his friend and was, was depressed about it, and his friend went and did ultimately commit suicide, and his friend, this boy that was left behind, has felt bad the rest of his life that he didn't say anything about it. So I think it's an excellent program in that it really shows these kinds of things that even to the younger kids, if you have a friend, you know, it's only going to help them, it's not going to hurt them.
Right. So I saw Jared's hand, and Dan, did you have something? Yep.
Yeah, just a question after Jared.
Okay, go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Stating that we definitely rule this out at freshman year and then seventh grade, I guess why are we not really introducing our fifth graders to this? Because moving to the middle school is a big step for them. I understand that Boston comes in at seventh grade, but wouldn't it be a better fit to try to bring this earlier? Or is it not content correct for fifth graders to really go into that? Yeah, I think it's developmentally a little past the fifth grade level, Joyce, would that be?
It is. What we're using right now when we're working with Connors Klein, they said that Second Step does, it's about help-seeking skills in fifth and sixth grade, so we are working on that in our Second Step programming, and then in seventh grade, it becomes depression and suicide specific.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jared. Go ahead, Dan.
So I'm just interested in finding out how, I didn't hear everything, I apologize for that, but how is this implemented? It can't be like a core course program like English and math and science. So how many, how often is it done? A little, that is what I'm interested in.
So students will ultimately get the instruction in seventh grade, and then it's different materials that are used at the high school level in ninth grade, so they'll get it in seventh grade and ninth grade from this program. We have other suicide prevention training that we've also done at other grades, but this is to augment what we're currently doing, and it's in a classroom. It's designed for one classroom period, and it's got an exit-out ticket, and students who are showing self-reporting signs of depression are screened that day before they go home. So there's a lot of careful planning in how it's implemented so that students are seen by counselors if they're reporting that they are feeling sad or having feelings of wanting to hurt themselves.
Okay, so there's like a regular class that they're not going to have because they'll do this instead for that day?
For that day, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Are you good, Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, Ellen, go ahead.
Yes, I have two things.
Okay.
For the staff part of this, staff training, I'm hoping all our staff get some training on this.
They do, they're required to by law.
Okay, okay, because you see this depression at all grade levels with our children, and they act in different ways. The other thing I'm wondering about is how we have reporting requirements, methods and procedures for our staff, all our staff, any member of our staff. How do you go, how have we set up the system by which they know they can report to whom and how, and how are we responding to these? Has that been set up and everybody knows about it?
So we originally looked at Signs of Suicide in February of 2020, and this is an in-person instruction, and then in March, we shut down. So for the last two years, we've been using NAMI pre-recorded modules, and we've been communicating to the staff with our policies and such, so they are receiving a two-hour individual training. This, Signs of Suicide, will be an in-person with a presenter, and it will change it up. It won't be showing them the same modules every year, so it'll be making the information fresh and also in-person and collaborative, so that we're hoping to enhance what we currently do with our staff.
But what about? What about our in-house processes of the methods of reporting? How do you do it? What forms do you use? Who do you give it to? And what is our established response requirements as a district?
We have a suicide prevention plan, which has gone through the board. And then for our mental health team, which are the people who get those, and we have a flow chart that all staff has gotten as to when they talk to a student, who they report to, so they know the staff. And then for our mental health team, which is administrators, school counselors, school psychologists, there are specific instructions for them because they are, they need the numbers of the mobile crisis unit, they need assessment forms, duty-to-warn forms, all of those pieces. So we have those pieces as well.
All those pieces are in place here throughout our school district?
Yes.
Joyce, would you also talk a little bit about the assessments?
The assessments that we do are a pre-screening of a student in the moment because we are not clinical professionals here in the building. But when we get a student that is screening in on our, with showing signs of risk for suicide, we do have a contract with Manchester Mental Health's Mobile Crisis Unit, and so we will make a phone call and have them come here and do a full safety assessment here at the school. If they deem that they are at a higher level of risk than just connecting them with outside counseling, they will give family paperwork that enables them to go through the process at the emergency room more efficiently than if they just took a student to the emergency room. So we have processes in place.
And how are parents brought into this process and informed?
So if we feel that our school psychologist or licensed mental health counselor in one of our buildings, or an administrator feels that they need to be evaluated, we make a phone call to a parent and say that we'd like to have them evaluated. You have choices. You can take them to your own mental health professional. If you have a counselor set up outside of school, you could take them to the emergency room. If you want someone to come here to the school and do that immediately, we will do that, and you can meet us here at the school so that you can be part of that evaluation. So.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Any other questions? So I know you need a motion to approve this. Would this be implemented immediately, or when?
I would be looking to schedule some spring training of staff and then really planning a rollout because we want to make sure we have.
Next year, okay.
Yeah, we want to have the pieces in place to follow up with every student that needs to be followed up with.
Right. All right, thank you, Joyce.
Move to approve the SOS program?
All right, did you want me, nobody has any other questions before Ellen does her motion? All right, so Ellen made a motion to approve the program. Is there a second? By Terry. Before I do roll call, any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Thank you, Joyce. And I know you have a second piece to talk to us?
I do. The SEAL of Bilinguality, it's a national seal. It was adopted by the state of New Hampshire in 2020, so just last year, with the first high school recipients getting this designation in the spring of 2021. Currently, 44 states and the District of Columbia have adopted this bilinguality seal. This recognition, we believe, will benefit our students, both those who excel in world language coursework, as well as our ELL students who are bilingual and can show proficiency in both English and another language. The process involves meeting competencies in three areas. So the first one is meeting all of the English-language graduation requirements. The second would be showing proficiency in another language through testing, and one of the test options is AP testing, which we currently do, and demonstration of English proficiency. And that can also be done through testing that we do, either access testing or the SAT. We've already budgeted for standardized testing so that we wouldn't see any additional costs to offering this to our students, and we show, see benefit in offering it. Sometimes it's hard for, especially our ELL students who have come here during high school, to get the two years of a world language under their belt when they're already learning English as their world language. So asking them to pick English and then pick additionally Spanish or French or Latin that we teach here with their home language becomes a lot of coursework for them to take to be college-ready. And through this bilinguality seal, they are college-ready by showing proficiency in English and their home language.
Does anybody have any? Go ahead, Rheta.
I should have asked this at the curriculum committee, but does American Sign Language include in that, or is it just foreign languages?
I think it's just world languages.
Thank you, Rheta. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ellen.
So no, I read this online when, I think Ginny sent this all to us. I'm correct in what you just said, I'm asking, and what I read. No one is required to be proficient in three languages. They can, they can get that if they want, but they're not required to.
There are certain colleges that are looking for that, and this would help, like UNH wants to see them take two years of a language in high school as coursework. So UNH would take this bilinguality seal in place of taking that.
So their, a ELL child can have their primary language plus English?
Yes.
Okay. And a child who's here has English, and they can take one of the other foreign languages that we offer, and that's all that's needed for either group?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Dan, did you have a, something to say?
Yeah, I'm a little confused because I don't remember seeing any information on this, so I'm still in the dark. I'm actually not sure what this is or what the request is for. It's very hard to hear that side of the room, that's all.
You should have gotten it. Ginny sent it out from the curriculum committee.
Couple of weeks ago.
To everybody, yeah.
Couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and I was looking at that, and I apologize. I got the, I got the other one, but I don't remember this one, so that's okay. I don't want to hold things up.
All right, thanks, Dan. Anybody else have any questions for Joyce before we, so you need a motion to approve to have the bilinguality seal, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So does anybody?
A motion to approve bilinguality seal.
By Shane. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any further discussions or questions before I do roll call? All right, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
I'm going to abstain because I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we have one abstention, and the rest, yeses. Thank you, Joyce, very much for coming tonight and explaining everything to us.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Have a good night.
Please go home.
Yes. All right.
Just a question. Tomorrow night, the mental, teen mental health event here?
Yes.
At the high school?
In the theater.
Okay.
Yeah. And Joyce, do you know what time that's at tomorrow night? Is it six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, so we're going to move on to our committee reports. We start with Scott.
Good evening, everyone. You have a manifest tonight in the amount of $2,942,445.66. Payroll, taxes and benefits are almost $2.3 million of that amount. Your special ed activity, I apologize for that subtotal, but that is essentially out-of-district placement costs, as well as transportation and the contracted services that you would, that you're seeing because we don't, we can't hire folks within district. General expenses, I'll just try to give you some ones that might be a little, that we don't see often. Town of Goffstown Sewer, we do pay sewer charges once a year to the town. Pelmac Industries, we are replacing some cameras here at the high school, as well as putting in some additional cameras in some dead spots. We've had, as you know, we had some vandalism early on in the year, and we are supplementing our security system with cameras in those areas. Next, Impact Fire Service, that was a little over $8,200 for Mountain View sprinkler system repairs. And you're going to see a little bit of a trend here. Affiliated HVAC, we had our ice machine here at the high school bit the dust, and that was replaced. We also had to do extensive repairs to the tractor at Mountain View Middle School. And that, what I wanted to share with you is that our repair lines are not looking great at this particular point. And when I say it from a budgetary perspective, we've had to do a lot of repairs. This summer, we spent $30,000 to replace the vaporizer units on our propane tanks. That was not budgeted for. So we're, I'm going to likely have to do a budget transfer on the next month or so with respect to our, like, our high school repair line is already expended. So this sometimes happens, so. And then the other one that's a little bit on, two of them that are a little unusual, Cleanorama, we are using contracted services for custodial support because we've had challenges hiring custodians. So we're using a service there. And then the last one, for those of you who have been on the board for the last two to three years, we do use Allard Park for our spring baseball, and I did re-up that agreement for this particular spring. And they are planning on doing some work in the very early spring on that field, and they asked for payment when we initiated the contract this year in order for them to do that work and for them to contract that work. So I agree to that. So food service, you'll see, performance food service is your food and commodities. And just to reiterate, you know, Megan is buying at least two to four weeks more food to try to get ahead of the supply chain. So our freezers are pretty much filled. Refrigerators just try to stay ahead, you know, of those things. She's doing a great job. But that's why you're seeing like these higher-than-normal amounts.
Anybody have any questions for Scott on the manifest? Go ahead, Jared.
Knowing that some of the numbers are off here, I just want to make sure the total manifest amount?
Yeah, that's right.
Two point nine is correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, good question.
Read my mind.
Yes.
And let's thank Caleb because he's the one that pointed it out to me.
Right. Any other questions? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the manifest.
Move to, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as presented.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen. Any further discussion before I do roll call? All right, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Is she still on?
Hold on.
I'm still here. Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are. I can, yeah. Do you have a vote?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Janelle. Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Replacement truck?
Yeah, another unfortunate series of events here. I provided the board members in their packets with a memo from Randy and myself. We have a 2003 Ford F-250, 18-year-old vehicle, that's unfortunately no longer in service. It failed its inspection, and it just has extensive rust and mechanical issues. So it's, it needs to get replaced. We did, as you'll see from the photo that I provided you, we are repurposing the truck, the bed, and the sander from this truck, and it's being put onto another vehicle within the district. We had this in our CIP, I think, two years away, and two, three years away, but it just simply didn't make it. Randy did shop around for replacement vehicles, and he was able to find one at Gripeney Ford. They have reserved it for us through tomorrow morning. Trying to get a pickup truck with a plow package right now is really, really difficult, and I don't know how Randy did it. Not only was he able to do that, but he was also able to, Gripeney honored the municipal pricing, the state bid pricing on this one, where other dealerships that he called would not, due to the fact that they felt they could get higher pricing for vehicles. So Gripeney does a lot of purchasing, sales with municipalities.
Well, Gripeney, don't they have the contract?
They have the state contract.
And they honored the price, even though if they sold the same truck privately, they would probably get another 15 grand for it.
They would get a lot higher amount. So they did hold it for us. In terms of funding for this, as I had mentioned, for the last couple of months, you're, we have already received the check. We're in the midst of processing, we have, we're still, we got a check from Health Trust. All three entities, SAU, New Boston, and Goffstown, over $750,000 check. However, we have to also give reimbursements to all of the employees who pay into their health insurance. But it's going to net out easily over $250,000 for the district as unanticipated revenue. So depending, so I'm not concerned that we have money to cover this truck using those surplus monies. And that's, that would be my recommendation, is to procure the vehicle tomorrow. I did contact our treasurer, so she's around to approve it, and this way Randy can pick it up on tomorrow or Wednesday.
So if, if there is a motion, would it have to say it comes out of the Health Trust? Because that's where you're hoping?
Not necessarily. I just, not necessarily. It's just, I will do, I just wanted you to know that that's.
We have the money.
We have surplus.
And then Scott, you'd have a budget transfer after the fact.
I would do a budget transfer, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott? Go ahead, Ellen.
Well, in our package, I'm going back to the third page, it has an amount of $61,900. Are these?
Those are the other bids.
The other, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to provide you the other bids. Your policy says that we should get at least.
I got it.
Two to three bids.
And the motion, do you need the 44,554 number?
I would prefer, honestly, I meant, you know, I would prefer more than that in case there, this is, I asked Randy about this this morning. I said, this include like destination fee, and you've been to the dealerships before, right? So I would request that you would go up to, say, 47,5 for any other fees that might be associated. I don't think we're going to have them, but I just don't want to be in a pickle. That's all.
Oh, I'll move it.
And Jared had a question first. Hang on one second, Ellen.
Just looking at the other listed within this proposal, I do see that the existing vehicle we're looking to part out, may I suggest that we potentially donate this vehicle to the Manchester School of Technology or something along the lines for our students to work on, so they could learn more about automotive services for restoration? Might be a good skill to have in the future. I never thought of that.
I like that. Because we actually had talked about, what do you do with an old truck like this?
Right.
And we talked about having a similar process to what the town does when they have an.
We were going to put it out to bid, but.
An old vehicle that they put out to bid.
I'd rather keep it in their network here at the school, but I know that we don't have the facilities to do that, but.
What, we'd be happy to ask.
Yeah, that would be an easy one.
If they wanted it, we'd be happy.
I would look at that as potentially our first, first opportunity, and if they wouldn't take it, then of course, you know, let's part it out or donate it. It's a good idea.
Right.
However, it's needed.
Good idea, Jared, thank you. Any other questions before Ellen does her motion? Caleb, did you have a question?
It says there are three quotes, all much higher than the Gripeney State bid, but then it only lists two, and there are only two additional. Was that just a typo, or are there an actual third bid that we're missing or it removed or something?
No, there was, there was, there was three quotes total. I apologize, so, yeah.
So there's one missing.
So it obtained two.
Oh, no, no, three.
There are three quotes, which is the Gripeney quote, then there's the Auto Fair, and then there's the.
Fourth.
Fourth, so there's three in total.
Right.
The way it worded, I can understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Caleb. Dan?
The, there is no need to get quotes for this because it's off the state bid. The state actually did the quoting on our behalf.
Right.
We're just very grateful that they're honoring, they're honoring the price.
Which is wonderful, yeah.
Anyone who's been car shopping understands.
All right, so if there's no other questions, go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, I'll move up to $47,500 for the purpose of a replacement pickup truck as presented.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Shane. Is there any further discussion before I do roll call? All right, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so are you all set for now, Scott?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so Budget Committee, Jared?
Budget Committee is interesting. We have completed all of our budgeting reviews for the town and for the school, of course. Our next meeting is now, though it's not on the schedule yet, because the January schedule is not out, is tentatively set for January 4th here in the library. This meeting is going to be to review all collective bargaining agreements that are being brought to the Budget Committee. So this is the catch-all meeting before the public meeting that the Budget Committee will have, which our business administrator, the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for January 11. I believe that would be in the theater.
Okay.
I believe it would be.
Right, yeah, I think that's where it's.
One thing I do want to bring to the superintendent and the administration.
One thing I do want to bring to the superintendent and the administration, there were two town groups, both the water precincts, that talked about the purchase of generators. I know that's something that we've been interested in as well for the middle school. And there was a discrepancy or hiccup for not really consolidated working with the town when the fire department got their generator. So I do recommend that the administrators potentially reach out to the water precincts just to potentially look at any funds or grants that might be trying to be utilized as we might be cannibalizing each other yet again. So I do want to just bring that to the administrator's attention, that that was discussed at the Budget Committee, at the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
Is that all you have for now?
Yes, thank you.
All right, perfect.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
I just want to make sure. I have January 11 down. Is that the Budget Committee's public hearing on all, the town and the school?
Yes.
Or just the town? Town, schools, special articles, and everything?
Everything that the Budget Committee would vote to recommend or not recommend.
Okay, that's on everything. Okay.
Dan, did you have something?
Nope, I'm just waiting for the vote.
Oh, okay. No vote. Go ahead, Scott.
I just want to say, I want to say thank you to Jared and also to Caleb. Just a really, really good budget season, I thought. I thought Jared represented the district really, really well, as did Caleb. It was, it was really great. And the relationships that Jared has cultivated, it's just been a really good process, especially with COVID and being out so many nights. We're able to have co-presentations, and it just, it went really, really smooth. And I've done this for so many years, I think it was one of the, one of the smoothest ones I've ever been a part of. So I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Jared and Caleb. We definitely appreciate all your hard work. All right, PNC, Rheta?
Yes. PNC met this evening, and we discussed the two awards, which we'll discuss further non-public. We also went over the mission, the draft mission and vision. And we have a working document that I'll have sent out to everyone to review, so we can discuss it at our next meeting in December.
December 20?
Yes.
Right, okay, perfect. And do you have another meeting set for PNC?
Um, probably, we may not need one.
Okay, so we'll find out later.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Rheta. All right, Policy meets next Monday, the 13th, at 5:30 at the SAU building. And then we have CNE. Ginny?
Yes, CNE has not met since our last school board meeting. And we will be meeting on the 13th after Heather's meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the SAU.
All right, thank you, Ginny. Facilities Planning Committee, Jared, do you have anything?
So we don't have any meetings set up, but I would like to set up a meeting for January. So I'm going to ask the business administrator to look at our calendars to see when we have some capacity to have that meeting.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, so the SAU Policy Review Committee meeting is this Wednesday at 5:00 at the SAU. Shane, are you able to be there?
I will be there.
Okay. And Dan, you'll be on the phone, correct?
Yes, I'm planning to be on the phone.
Okay, perfect. So that's 5 to 6. And then after is the SAU full school board meeting at 6:00. And I do need to know if anybody knows if they're not going to be there, because we are trying to make sure we have a quorum, because we've already heard from some board members that cannot go. So is there anybody here who knows now they're not going to be there? Everybody assuming they'll be there on Wednesday night at 6:00? All right, perfect. Thank you. And then Superintendent Report?
Thank you. So just a few updates, and then I'll get into the COVID numbers. I wanted to let the board know that the high school will be doing the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey on December 15. That's a statewide survey that takes a look at a number of factors that the state has been doing for probably in excess of three decades at this point. So we are administering on the 15th. I wanted to make sure board members had the dates for deliberative session, and we'll make sure that we get these on, on your agenda as well. We're looking at Monday, February 7th, as our deliberative date. That is currently a regularly scheduled school board meeting. So we'll work around that. Likely, we would replace the meeting with the deliberative session. And a snow day of Wednesday, February 9. Mr. Gross and I also have New Boston's date, so it's going to be, Monday is going to be Goffstown, Tuesday is going to be New Boston, and then snow days will be Wednesday and Thursday for both towns. So Monday, February 7th, will be deliberative, and the snow day will be the 9th. But I do have it on good authority, it's not going to snow on the 7th. So I think we're going to be good with that. I wanted to let you know
Time, time.
Uh, Mrs. Moran?
But that hasn't been determined yet.
I think seven?
Usually it's seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Theater. We'd go earlier.
What was that, Ellen?
In the theater?
I don't
We're planning to do it in the theater.
In the theater, okay.
We can go early if you want. It's up to the board.
Yeah. Whatever time works for the board. We would plan on seven, but if you'd like to do a different time, we're open to that.
Do we normally do this on the weekends?
We do.
So we've done this on a Saturday for the last number of years. And there's a one-week window that you can hold the deliberative session, and the first Saturday is a conflict. And we don't want to, we can't take the chance of the second Saturday, because then you don't have a snow day. So this, this is a little bit of a deviation. And we've done it during the week. We've done it on Saturdays. We thought originally when we went to Saturdays that it would increase community participation. It really didn't. But so, yes, historically, we've done this on Saturday. We also considered something a little unusual, of the possibility of doing the town and the school on the same night. I think logistically, that just proved to be something we couldn't quite pull off. But our thinking was one timeout for the Budget Committee, one timeout for the supervisors of the checklist. But alas, the schedule wouldn't align for that. Continuing on, I want to let you know the area agreement has been sent to the State Board of Ed, and it is on their consent agenda for their meeting this Thursday. So we do not anticipate anything to come of that. Attorney Egert has spoken with the department, and they're, they have everything they need. And we would anticipate this being a non-issue, and it would be something that the State Board would approve. But we'll let you know. If you have not heard, I wanted to let the board know that there is a new website that was started by the Department of Education to allow people to report teachers who are teaching divisive concepts. And then you might have heard in the media that there was a private group that created what they call the bounty for anyone to report teachers. Again, a lot of this has to do with the premise of critical race theory and some of those other things, which, as I've said many, many times, we are not doing, we are not teaching. But if you hadn't heard, I wanted you to know that this new website exists. It's certainly something that has elevated the level of anxiety for teachers. I think this is something that is concerning in a very global sense. Last week, we did a vaccine clinic for five to 11-year-olds. We had 130 kids that came and got their vaccines, so we were pleased to do that. We have just heard that it looks like the 12 to 17 boosters have been approved. So we spoke with the Manchester Public Health Department last Wednesday, and we will plan on doing a clinic for that population. I will communicate that to parents, so they don't have to worry about scheduling, they don't have to worry about, you know, creating, you know, an account on the state. They don't have to do any of that. They can just schedule with us, and we'll take care of it. And before I get to the numbers, my last update is tonight was the first night of our drive-up symptomatic COVID testing. So that was the very first night. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the hard work of Mrs. McGrath, who has very quickly become a COVID czar and has learned how to do all the bookings and has really taken on the majority of the heavy lifting associated with this. Kate has just been an incredible utility player. So that, tonight was our first night. We had a paramedic from the Goffstown Fire Department. We have worked out an arrangement with them that they're going to be staffing our clinic for us. And as well as Mrs. Fragos, who works at the SAU, was on-site to assist. So we're very pleased. And again, we're trying to do these things to make it easier on families. So we heard that it was difficult and problematic for families to book an appointment to get the vaccine, so we did it. We've heard that it continues to be hard and challenging to find tests. So now we have that option twice a week for anyone who's not part of our drive-up, or not part of our Safer at School screening program. They can drive up, they don't have to be part of the program, they can sign the consent right there, and it's taken care of. So that was another piece. So that clinic will be Mondays and Thursday afternoons, as long as the need exists. And again, Mr. Gross thanked the DPW and the Select Board, who have been great partners for us. In terms of the numbers, as you heard from our public comment a little earlier, the numbers are very high. Everyone, I think, is probably aware. Just real quickly, the state has announced over 1,000, 1,074 per 100,000 for the last 14 days. Hillsborough County is at 984. Test positivity rate is at 13%, which is very concerning. Currently, 178 current school clusters, 43 current school outbreaks. The community of Goffstown is 116 positives. New Boston has 38. And hospitalizations, the state website says 399, but I heard on WMUR that it is well over 400 at this point. So I think at this point, everybody knows kind of the state of the state. In terms of trying to address a few of the questions that our community members had asked, there was a, or a comment, rather, about quarantining. I would be curious to learn more about that, because we are not quarantining anyone. So the only quarantines at this point that are being brought forth are for household contacts. And if you are vaccinated, even a child, you do not have to quarantine, per the state. So we continue to do contact tracing, which is an added step that we continue to do because I want to be able to tell people, your child was a close contact, as opposed to just kind of leaving it that we have cases, but we're not notifying close contacts. That's been important, because remember, for our testing program, if you're a close contact, you can elect to do close contact testing and do one or two weeks where you would get a PCR test, and then you don't have to continue in the program if you don't want to. But at this point, the cases continue to be very high. In terms of the public comment that we received, I think everyone is aware that, at this point, vaccines are available, everyone five and up. We have weekly testing, we have drive-up testing, we have a lot of options that we've put in place. I don't know if the board wanted to consider a discussion about masks at this point. Certainly, from a public health perspective, the numbers are very high and very concerning. But at this point, I, I optimistically keep telling everyone it's going to get better. And history will prove that I'm right. I'm not sure on the timeline. But, you know, when you look at the state graph, we're, we're higher now than we were back in January and February, which is really disheartening to, to all of us. And again, I can't emphasize enough, this is incredibly challenging for kids. It's hard on their mental health, it's hard on their social, emotional development, it's hard for the adults around them to stay positive and upbeat and optimistic and try to convey. One of the most important things we can ever teach kids to be is flexible. And I think the pandemic has taught us, if nothing else, you need to be flexible. You need to have the ability to change and adapt. So I would encourage everyone to continue to stay upbeat, stay positive, even though it's not easy. And we're all tired, and it's been a long hard fall for everybody. But at this point, I will say to the board again, I have no intention of going remote. You've heard and seen a number of other schools in New Hampshire that have done that, even for short periods of time. I don't intend to do that. And the only time, type of circumstance that I would do that is if it's a recommendation from DHHS, or if we simply don't have the staffing to be able to have our schools open. But I don't anticipate that. So I'm not sure if there are any other questions that I could respond to that our, our public comment provided, or I'm happy to answer any questions from board members.
I guess the question was, and maybe the board may want to, you asked the question, Brian, why not wear masks? Why not require it? I'm just raising it. I'm not saying I support it. I just would like to know the reasoning behind not requiring masks. I mean, everybody can wear a mask. It's perfectly fine. It's optional. Anybody can wear a mask. People concerned about it, they should be wearing a mask. How does the board or superintendent feel, given that, I think today we got a notice, not counting, not including New Boston, we had eight more cases here in Goffstown. Was that today's numbers?
There might be a couple more. I haven't emailed to you yet.
Right. So, I mean, the numbers, I don't know, for me, it sounds like it's higher than it was last year. But I'm just wondering how the board feels about, about it, requiring the masks, or answering the question, why not require masks?
Well, do you want to explain that there is requiring of masks if there's a COVID positive in a classroom?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so we, we have a targeted mask program that we discussed going back to August. So it's, it's incorrect to say that we're not masking. We are masking when we have circumstances per our emergency operations plan that dictate it. So at this point, I can tell the board confidently that overwhelmingly, our cases continue to be household contacts. That's what we see. We are seeing, I could give no one any assurance that there is no possibility of school-based transmission, but I would say overwhelmingly, case after case after case, they're positive household contacts. So at this point, I can't give anyone a guarantee that there's no, no school-based transmission, but I still think that that is, is very low, because we continue to see positive, the, the pattern overwhelmingly is positive, unvaccinated parents, everyone in the household is positive. That has been our pattern. We are seeing breakthrough cases of people who are vaccinated. So we've seen students and staff. We've seen a slight uptick in that, but our numbers still continue to be a very small percentage of our total overall numbers. So, you know, at this point, I think if this is an action, a step that the board wanted to take, I think you certainly could. I think there are a lot of people that would be supportive of that. There are a lot of people that wouldn't. We went through all that, you know, going back to August. I do think cases are going to get better. I think that we're kind of still coming off the apex of, of cases. And I'm hoping that before Christmas, we're going to see the cases subside. But certainly, if, if the board wanted to go that route, that would certainly be the board's pleasure.
I just want to raise, because it was raised there, I've heard it elsewhere, and the numbers, okay. I want to reiterate for the public, anyone who's concerned, have your child wear the masks. We're not saying you shouldn't wear them.
Right.
But allowing, at this moment, the board has left it up to people to have that option.
Right.
And wear the mask and everything else that we're doing in our schools for germs and cleanliness and everything.
And every school in our district is getting positives.
Yes.
Every day.
Every school.
Or every other day. There isn't one school in this district that is not having a positive case.
Yeah, we, we have cases every single day. So it's, it's one of those things that, you know, we have accepted that this is what it's going to be. And we're just keeping our head down, and we're still going forward, because every day, we need, our kids need us to show up. Our, our kids need to be in person, they need to be together with their peers. And we're just going to continue on.
And the CDC has been, was, has been okay with everything that you've been doing. I know we've had a couple of clusters
Yeah, so we've, we've had a couple of clusters, and we've had a, at this point, we've had outbreaks as well. Remember, an outbreak, the way it's defined, is two clusters that are not related. Then a cluster is three positives within a group. So the group could be all of 7th grade, it could be a bus, it could be a classroom, depending on what the group is. Just a couple of other things that I did hear from the public comment. There was a comment about six-foot distancing. CDC moved away from six-foot distancing, they adopted three-foot distancing earlier. And there was also a comment about cohorting. We are still cohorting. That is still, we're not as strict as we were last year, but we're still controlling groups. You know, I would say, with the exception of high school, is a little different. But the, certainly the younger grades, where we tried to focus some of those efforts, because those children were not able to get the vaccine yet. Now, of course, they are.
Does anybody, oh, go ahead, Ginny.
Yep.
And Rheta.
This is kind of a crazy question, but is there any teaching going on with, especially the younger kids, where this lady brought up, you don't know who's vaccinated, or you may know who's vaccinated, and not wearing masks, and not, and not being vaccinated? Is there any teaching to kids where, you know, what you can do, and if you, you know, if your friend says, well, I'm not vaccinated, I'm not going to wear a mask, you know, like you can be safe, and this is what we do? Is any of that explained to kids, so that they know that they're being cared for safely at school? And because, I know all the cohorting and all of the this and the masks, and now you have to wear masks, and now you don't, and we're doing this. Do the kids really understand that process, so kids aren't going to school feeling uncomfortable? Because maybe at home, their parents are very mask-driven, and other families are not masked. not mask-driven? Do the kids understand, like, the group of them together, understand, and are we giving them any teaching of what we're doing?
So we're certainly teaching things like hygiene expectations, respiratory hygiene expectations. We're being very careful about the vaccine. So I have said that we will, for the people who want the vaccine, we will make it available for them, but no, we're not teaching, get the vaccine, don't get the vaccine, we're definitely.
No, I don't mean that, but just like, if your friend says to you that you, he hasn't vaccinated, I'm like, should I panic? Do they know what the reaction?
Yeah, so the teachers, teachers are attending to the social, emotional needs of kids all the time. So things come up in conversation, kids are nervous, kids are fearful, kids have a lot of misinformation, so they hear a lot of things, sometimes that aren't true or aren't accurate. So yeah, I would say that we're certainly making every effort to make sure that kids have good information, that kids understand, and we're trying to reduce their anxiety. We've got kids that are fearful. And I would say, some of that has dissipated somewhat over time, but certainly last year, kids were nervous and scared, and it's been a scary time. And we have a lot of kids that are kind of, have heightened anxiety to begin with. So I would say, the number of kids that are struggling with anxiety has never been so high. So I think we need to continue to give them good information, and again, you know, we're not going down the pathway that we're saying, you should do this, or you should do that. I think at this point, people know, and people should be able to make their own decisions about what is appropriate for them and their families. And that's kind of the position that we've taken throughout this whole time.
But I'm just hoping that they understand all of these different things that are happening in how they're.
I think they do. The other thing, Jenny, is we're making sure that culturally, wear a mask, don't wear a mask, it's all fine.
Yep.
So, you know, if kids wearing masks, I've only heard about a very, very few, I think I've had two examples shared with me, and we jumped on it immediately, where kids were teasing other kids for wearing or not wearing masks. I only had a couple of circumstances, and it was promptly addressed. So, you know, it's, I would say, it's fine with the kids.
Absolutely.
It's fine with the kids. And I would say Caleb would be, Caleb, I think, has good insight on everything, but, you know, he could certainly share his perspective as well.
And I'm just more concerned about the younger kids, who don't understand all of the ins and outs of COVID, and they always fear.
There's a lot of misinformation around a lot of topics.
So, Reta, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I know you've talked about being flexible, and how resilient everyone can or should or wants to be. I just wanted to do a quick check-in on the teachers and staff with all of this, because this time last, well, maybe not this time, six months ago, we thought, we're done.
We did.
And it's up again, which is very disheartening to a lot of people, but I'm wondering about.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Reta. I would say, our teachers and our support staff continue to do a spectacular job. It's never been more challenging to be a public school teacher, or an employee, than it is right now. And Reta's assessment is exactly correct. On St. Patrick's Day, when we did our first staff vaccine clinic, we did think that we were turning the corner. We thought that we were moving into the next phase. I talked to this board about the recovery stage of the pandemic, and moving into remediating academic deficits. We're not there yet, unfortunately. It's disheartening to all of us. So I would say, our teachers are continuing to be optimistic, but that takes a toll. So to continue to be positive, and upbeat, and optimistic, and put on that face every day, for all of our staff, is not easy. So I hope so, we're certainly doing everything we can to try to support people. And then on top of it, again, everyone recognizes and knows that we can't hire, we can't find people. So we have vacancies, we have support staff, we have custodian, we have teacher vacancies we haven't been able to do or fill. So yeah, our, the entire public school system is under strain and stressed. And then, at the same time, you've got the Department of Ed, you know, opening up this website that you can report anonymously, that teachers are teaching discriminatory thing, things. It's a hard time to be a teacher. And I think, all the more reason that we need to be thankful and appreciative, and take good care of our staff. We need to make sure that we're paying people fair wages, so that they want to stay here.
Right.
And I would ask everyone to continue to have a little bit of patience, a little bit of grace with one another, err on the side of generosity, because it's hard, and, you know, a lot of families have lost loved ones, they have people in the hospital, they have people who are sick, they're having a hard time, they're struggling.
Ellen, go ahead.
Did, I may have misunderstood something you said, Brian. Did you say we are not requiring quarantining?
The state isn't requiring quarantine.
Are we, as a district?
So the only quarantine are for household contacts.
Okay.
So like, last year, when they had a classroom, if there was contact tracing, or somebody, the whole classroom, right, or the people that were in.
Whoever was in close proximity, but for young children, we were quarantining the entire classroom if they were.
Okay, but we're not doing that this year, so it's only if it's in the household.
The state of New Hampshire is not doing it.
Okay.
Only for household contacts, and if you're vaccinated, there is no, even if you have a positive household contact, there is no requirement of that.
Okay, but if the child is not vaccinated, and someone in the family does, yes?
Then they're, then they are required to quarantine, that's correct.
Thank you, clarity on that.
But remember, that's why we, and I'm appreciative that the board approved Mrs. Fife as our remote teacher, who's working with kids that are in quarantine. Those services have been really important this year, and she's provided support to a lot of kids.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
So I know, one of the questions, and just to clarify, that nobody knows who's vaccinated, unless the parent decides to tell the school nurse. Teachers are not to ask, are you vaccinated or not?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Yeah, and again, we just want to be respectful of people's privacy.
Absolutely.
So it's not our position to say someone should or shouldn't be vaccinated, I think that's an individual choice for families. We know, I know there are people close to me that have allergies and can't be vaccinated, even if ideologically they want it to be. And we've, I think, honored and respected that.
Right. Go ahead, Dan, do you have something?
I do. We have to remember that there are HIPAA laws surrounding it, just like they're up for the scrolls, there are HIPAA laws about healthcare, so we've got to be very careful.
Right, yeah, that was one of the questions from the public comment, I just wanted to make sure that nobody knows who's vaccinated.
Correct.
So, oh, sorry, Caleb, thank you.
Just for posterity's sake, to make the public aware, we aren't requiring quarantining, but we are doing contact tracing at a school level. Do you have a reasonable estimate of when we contact trace? How many, well, I guess, a proportion, what proportion of those people that we tell you're a close contact, what proportion of them then self-quarantine, based on the school's contact tracing? Because that might contribute to some of the concerns.
I would say, very, very, very few. It's been a rarity, that if we've identified a close contact, that parents have voluntarily chosen to quarantine. I would have to check with principals, but maybe, maybe a couple of examples of that.
Thank you, Caleb.
And then, do you maybe have a proportion of approximately what, of each school, how many people are participating in the testing programs? Maybe assuage some of the concerns?
Yeah, so we've got.
What kind of visibility we have on this?
That's a great question as well. I actually just deleted the numbers, because I had.
Of course.
We have about 800 people that are participating in the weekly PCR tests that are done, and I would just, again, share with the board, I think the board's aware, we did not go with the pooled testing option. This was something that I felt strongly about, that the program that we chose, there are individual PCR tests that are done on a weekly basis. A pooled test means everybody, say it's 100, 100 tests go into one, and they're treated as one sample, then you get a positive out of the pool, you then have to do individual testing on each of those 100 people. It seemed unnecessary to me, and so that's part of the reason that we went with the model that we have. It's a little different by school, Caleb. The high school is lower than the younger grades, we have more kids participating in the weekly testing at the elementary level than we do at the high school level. But it's a great resource, you know, so again, any family who, and you get notified via text message and email that your child was tested, and then you get notified when their results come back, and usually, it's the next day. And we've been very impressed with UNH, and Stewart's ambulance service has been the vendor that's coming on-site and doing the collection, and they've showed up on time, they're professional, they're really good with the children, they have a nice kind of bedside manner, demeanor. And it's been an important part of our program. You know, we've got a lot of pieces in place right now that didn't exist in August.
Right.
Things that we aspired to, but they're here. The vaccines are here, the weekly testing, drive-up testing, it's all, it's all part of the response at this point.
Go ahead, Caleb.
My last one.
Sure.
Just, and maybe just to reiterate for parents who might be concerned, what's the best way to enroll their student in that testing program?
Sure, great question. If people who are interested in the SAS testing, the Safer at School screening program, right on the front page of the SIU 19 website is all the information that anyone would need to know, including an informational video about how to sign up and the benefits of the program. And they can opt in and opt out. We do have a cycle, we have a calendar on the website, that if you want to opt into the program, how often we're doing open enrollments. But now that we've added the symptomatic testing, you don't even have to be part of the program to have to test at the offsite clinic.
Awesome. Thank you, Caleb. All right, does anybody else have any questions for Brian, before we move on? Go ahead, Shane.
Well, not related to COVID.
Sure.
Great. Let's talk about teaching.
So around the divisive concepts legislation, are we providing our teachers and staff with any kind of education or resources as far as, you know, how to navigate that? I know that there is a great deal, I'll say fear amongst educators, many of them feel targeted, things of that nature. So I just think it's important that we kind of educate our staff on, you know, we can still teach history, you know, as we know, we're not teaching, you know, CRT, most places aren't. But I just, I'm curious if we're providing resources or education to our staff on that.
We, so we have, it's been more of a high school focus than it has been at the other levels.
Sure.
But Mrs. McCann has provided resources, and I think they've had ongoing discussions at faculty meetings, but I think it's a good topic for us to keep circling back to, so I'll follow up with the high school. Because more than anything, I want our teachers to know, we have their back, they have our support.
Absolutely.
I don't care what the craziness around us happens to be, we are supporting you. And teachers can and should be able to teach topics, they just, some of them, we have to be careful about what and how we teach, particularly given the, you know, the budget rider that got attached to the, you know, I think the board's aware of how, you know, that process all worked, that this language was added to the budget rider, it wasn't a piece of legislation that went through the process on its own.
Right.
But be that as it may, you know, we will, you know, continue to be there, to have hard conversations, and to talk about topics, and, you know, but we're not doing, and really, I don't think any schools in New Hampshire are teaching critical race theory, but, you know, I can't speak to what other districts are doing.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions for Brian? All right, so moving on to old business, draft warrant articles review. Scott, Brian, did you want to?
Mr. Gross.
Go over that.
Hold on one second. So it's respect to the, to the warrant articles, our first warrant article is, well, first article one is your officers, or two is your budget, three is the collective bargaining agreement, which will be discussed later on. Mike, I think the question that I have, you know, for the board is, are there any issues with the warrant language that we have presented to you? I mean, the area agreement language we got from attorney Dean Egger, we received the language with respect to the contingency fund from school council Sarah Murdo, any issues with the warrant language itself? We will obviously address the collective bargaining agreement once you discuss it, but any issues with any of the language that you're.
Well, we already approved the CRF.
Right.
And the two and a half percent contingency to five. So the only other was the area, right? And the budget, and then.
And the contract, right.
And the contract, which we don't.
You have to wait, usually you wait until after the public hearing to do all that, because that's your recommendations. When you vote on that, that's what goes on the ballot.
Right, for the, for the teachers.
At this point, we should be in good shape.
We're in good shape. Does anybody have any questions on anything before we move on? Okay. All right, so the default budget review.
Yeah, so this is another one, I wouldn't be asking for any signatures, you know, tonight, because I can't do it until you, more or less formally, have to click a button, and then it queues up the one that you could sign. But I wanted you to get an advanced copy of this, and hopefully take action this evening. What you see in front of you is, are the four pages that is part of the Department of Revenue's submission. So if you go to page number two, you'll see that it's broken down by function code, starting with regular programs. And just to give, you know, some newer board members how this, how this works. So the prior year's adopted budget was, for that regular program, 1,100 series was $19,154,297. And there were actual reductions there, and that's more than likely because of teacher turnover, teacher turnover. Most of our, when you go down to the one below that, special programs, you'll see that there was an addition. By default budget, we are allowed to add in any contractual obligations or costs that are mandated by law. So in special ed, this is where you have most of your paraprofessionals, their contracts are based upon the collective bargaining agreements, so that would go into the default, as well as any services. So that makes a lot of sense. As you go down, and I'll, executive administration, you'll note, I'm going to go down to the third one down, the 2,400 series, school administration services. On that one, you'll see a one-time appropriation, that was the $12,000 for the appraisals at Built Mountain View and the high school. So I wanted, this is what we had talked about, about, two months ago, when we started the whole budget, I said, this is what would be default, this is what not, this is what's not. And essentially, what you're seeing here is just that application of that. So there are some reductions and increases, and then I also put in the, you know, pretty much more or less, one-time appropriations. On page three, you'll see the debt service. Those are one-time appropriations, were taken out, less leaving $1 in those lines, in case we were to bond something, which probably won't, but if you ever had to do it, call a special election, you'd be able to do that. So that's essentially it. On the back page, those are the explanations of why something was either added. So that first one, that 4,600 series, we added $1 million for the ESER grant project, and that was for some planned window replacement project. The reasons why there were reductions was we paid off the bonds, and this provides the DRA and the community with transparency as to what we're doing. Bottom line is that I would need the board's approval on this, to click the submit button, and then you can sign it at your next scheduled meeting. And that, I would turn to page three or four. And the total default budget amount is $48,548,234.
All right, thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions for Scott, before doing a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the draft as presented.
Thank you, Jared, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Shane? Any further discussion before I do roll call? All right, see you in, oh, go ahead, Dan.
The way the motion went is to do a draft, so why do we need to approve a draft?
Well, approve the draft as presented for printout and signature at our next meeting.
Because it says draft on our sheet, right, is that why?
It, that's because it's, right, but are we approving this as the final copy?
Yes.
Is that the intent of the motion?
Yeah, that was the intent.
That reflected in the minutes.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second, I'm going to do roll call. Reta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared? Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed.
And I forgot to mention earlier, I have some good news. Last Friday, we received preliminary conceptual approval for the windows project that was referred here from the DOE. It was five weeks we waited for that. I was reassured that it would take a lot quicker turnaround on future ones, so they apologized. But, so now we're in phase two, which we're going to meet with the architect tomorrow, and we're going to be hopefully going towards final approval on that project. But I wanted, that was good news. We've been waiting on it forever.
Absolutely. So since you have a motion and it's approved, you're going to send Panda docs to everybody?
Or I can just print it for the next meeting is fine too.
Okay.
It's either, Dan and Janelle, would you prefer that it be a Panda doc? So you can sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do it, I'll do it as a Panda doc.
All right, so then everybody should look so you can get it.
I'll send an email beforehand.
Okay.
So that you know.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we're done with default budget. So now we have comments or feedback from first read policies that we did a couple of weeks ago. Did anybody have anything, any questions about them? They'll come back for second reads on December 20th, which we would then move forward unless someone had any questions. Are any questions on any of those policies that came? They were in our packet last time. Is everybody good with them? Okay. All right, so they'll come back December 20th for second read. All right, so new business. First is MVMS principal search process.
So I will start with an apology on this one.
Okay.
We have the search process done, but we, I neglected to include this in the packet, so we will bring this to your next board meeting.
Okay.
The short version is we're looking to get out early to begin the search. Exeter is already looking for their middle school principal, so we're, we're going to overlap slightly with their time period. We are looking at a January start, so I will bring the full printout of the entire process, including the committee composition. I apologize that I neglected to include that. So we'll bring that to the next meeting.
You mean January to start looking, not to hire a principal?
Correct. No, we would hope to have somebody in place in March.
Thanks, okay.
In March. Our, March it would be our goal.
Okay. All right, so that'll come back December 20th?
Yeah, and I apologize. We could probably email it out tomorrow. It's already done. So we could, we could send it out if the board.
Okay, that way everybody's chance to look at it.
Either way.
Okay. So the next is snow days, distance learning presentation.
So what you have in your packets is, we put together a format to, as we've discussed before, when we have inclement weather, to be able to shift to a distance learning day as opposed to being closed for a traditional snow day. And what you'll see is the same structural framework for each level. So when you see kind of the framework, each of these is, is done in the exact same way, but they have a different developmental approach. So Glen Lake looks different than all the other schools. Maple and Bartlett are identical. They are aligned. The middle school looks slightly different, and the high school looks slightly different. So what we would be essentially doing here would, would be notifying the board of our intent to access distance learning days if the weather is not safe for us to be in school. And it will, the day will look different based on level. And what I'd like to do is do this for a year and then kind of evaluate this model and, and think about how did it work for kids, how did it work for families, how did it work for staff. So there are kind of plans built in so that we have it clear what everyone is doing for that day, what the expectations are for students. And if the board is in concurrence, then we would go about notifying parents, that would happen by school, that we would be essentially letting them know that if the weather is unsafe to drive, that we will have a distance learning day. So I, I think you've had, I wasn't planning to present each of these. They're all the same structural format, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. And this was done by your administrators along with input from teachers. So I didn't dictate what the expectations are, I just dictated what the format would be. So each of these is kind of just the same format, but the, the schools did these entirely, and Mrs. Berry provided support to them through this process as well.
Ellen, I saw your hand up.
So this is not a situation where, when there's a snow day and we'll be doing distance learning, the children already have their work.
Correct.
And they're not required to be on a school schedule on the computer.
Only for the high school.
Yeah, high school.
The high school is a slightly different model. The high school does have synchronous expectations for attending.
But the others don't.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, we tried to do that developmentally, taking feedback that people wanted the ability to have, you know, let families kind of choose what makes sense to them. We know that it's hard for families that might have multiple kids and not enough devices. So the idea, we wanted to move away from the younger children from that kind of six hours on Zoom
Right.
kind of mindset. So that's what we were purposely trying to move away from.
Thank you very much for acknowledging the concerns of so many parents. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that was definitely hot. And if we're in a full power outage?
And if we're in a full power outage, or if we have extensive internet being down, then it would just be an old school, old school snow day, and the people will rejoice. So if and when that happens, you know, but if, if we've got, you know, a substantial amount of people without power, then that would not be this. This would be, people have power, people have internet, this would be our model for the day. And again, trying to get away from that younger kids being on Zoom all day.
Right, yeah, that was really tough.
And to travel, you know, to have it be more of a practicing, I would say, individual practice of skills that they've already been directly taught, is our approach.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ginny?
In this work that they would be giving ahead, especially for the younger kids, if these kids are not at home with parents, but somewhere else during the day because they don't have school, is this going to be work that they're going to be able to do during the day?
Yes. So the, the teachers are designing this, the administration is designing this, recognizing that not everyone has the same level of support. So kids might be at a babysitter's house, they might be at the Y, they may have access to computers, they may not. So we wanted to, and we also wanted to give a lot of flexibility. So one of the questions I had is, how many high school kids don't have internet connectivity? So we had done that number a while back. It is very, very low, but I said to the high school, make sure you have a contingency plan, that if we have a student who doesn't have a device or doesn't have connectivity, that there's kind of a plan B for that kid. And again, be generous. Let's err on the side of generosity. So that's, that's how they've designed this, recognizing that people have different levels of support, different levels of, you know, access to devices, et cetera.
And are we going to make sure that our teachers are not expected to answer emails at 8 o'clock at night?
Yeah, so we, and we built some of that in, kind of focused around the premise of office hours. We did that more for the middle school and the high school, but the idea that if you need to communicate with your teacher, here's kind of that window of how you do that. And then for special education, you know, we built in a lot of supports for those students to make sure that they have the assistance that they need. And for some of our people, you know, that this will be a day where they'll be doing the suicide training. They'll be do some, doing some of these other mandatory trainings if there are people that don't have direct teaching responsibilities that day, so that we have kind of an accounting of everybody and we know what they're doing.
Go ahead Reta.
So for several of the schools, it sounds like the teachers need to anticipate the day before that there will be a snowstorm.
That's part of the model that they wanted. They recognize and understand that at any point in time, the weather can change, the circumstances can change, and they have to be ready to go. So I think what the elementary schools in particular are planning to do is to send home, this is, the elementaries kind of did what is more of the old traditional Blizzard bag kind of approach, so that those packets are going to go home before there is a need. And then if we move, you know, move past three, then we'll, we'll have to make more. But so, yeah, they, we've tried to plan for, you know, kind of a lot of different scenarios that, you know, it's, it's not always as clean that, you know, you see the front, you know, the storm front coming, and we know Wednesday or Thursday we have a storm coming. It could be that, and by the way, this may not be weather. This could be, we, the boilers aren't working.
Flood.
We may not have water. We may not have, you know, we may not have power at the school. So I think that we're considering this for inclement weather, but I think that there's applicability beyond, you know, kind of that weather type closing.
Right. Thank you Reta. Shane, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding you right. So you, you worked with the staff at different levels on this plan?
Correct.
Okay. Because the plan, I like the flexibility of the plan. I would, my only concern would be like, a high school teacher is expected to run remote classes all day, whereas an elementary teacher's accessed through email. So it's kind of a disparity, but if the staff were okay with that?
Yeah, and I think developmentally, our staff know that, you know, what we need to do with little kids is different than what we need to do with high school kids. We also shared this with our unions ahead of time so that they have the chance.
That was, yeah, the question would be, any CBA kind of?
And they've, they've known this was coming. We've been working on this for several months. So this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, you know, and again, I think we need to, let's go through this this year and see how it goes, and we'll evaluate it as we get closer to springtime when it's nice weather and hopefully no COVID cases.
Right. Go ahead Ellen.
Thank you.
As we know, not all our, our staff are teachers. Others are hourly paid, with or without contracts. I don't know, I'm thinking of Paris and food service people. Would this be a day that they are, they're off and they're not making it up? So it's going to be an unpaid day?
No. So we have PD built into the day that we have options, like the suicide program and other things, that we have trainings planned and established for those people are ready.
Oh, so they would come in?
Nope, it would be remote.
Remote PD for the, those staff that are not teachers.
Exactly.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? So do you?
Yes.
Oh, sorry Caleb.
Just to be clear, at the beginning of the Bartlett and Maple Ave plan, it says that the superintendent will make the determination on whether the emergency closing is a distance learning day or a traditional closure. Is that just for this school's plan, or does that apply to all of the schools' plan?
That applies to all of them. So the, the distance learning day or traditional closure, the traditional closure would be, there's no power, there's no internet. But for the most part, if we have power and, and internet connectivity, we would shift to a distance learning day. And we learned last year we can do this.
Right.
And these are important skills. So, you know, the ability to be able to manage a remote day like this, a distance learning day, these are all important skills for kids, you know, as they get closer to graduating and going out into the world.
So that paragraph should go on each school so that it's?
Just to make it explicitly clear.
Consistent, that it's not just Bartlett and Maple. Thank you Caleb for showing us that.
Yeah, I think that is a good piece. We'll add that.
So do you need a motion from us, or just?
I would leave it up to the board. This is, this is my intent. It's been presented. Certainly the board could make a motion. I presented this last week to New Boston. They chose not to make a motion.
Okay.
So really, I would leave this up to the board's discretion. This is our plan.
Go ahead Ellen.
I would, I would like, I personally would like to show support for this plan.
Yep.
For administration and the work, and our staff who put this together.
Yeah.
So I'd like to show support and move that we, the school board, support the proposed plan for the distance learning.
All right, Dan?
Yeah, can you help me understand what that means?
What?
An official motion to support something. That's, I don't understand what that means.
That, that the board will actually vote to support this program that has been put together by our administration and staff.
All right. And if Brian needs to change it, just to tweak it a little bit because of circumstances, and we've already voted on it, what do we do then?
He can just change it.
Yeah, but I see what Dan's saying, that, you know, we don't need to do a motion for this. We can all just approve it. I think Dan's concerned if there's a tweaking, unless you put that in your motion, that Brian needs to, if he needs to change anything.
I'd like to, okay, move that the board support the, the proposed distance learning, allowing for the administration to revise it as, as the need arises.
Okay. Does that work Dan?
I like it better. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you Dan. Thank you Ellen. All right, so I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Jared?
No, no, a question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
After a second.
All right, do I have a second before I take Jared's question? Anybody want a second? Nobody wants a second. Okay.
Did you, had your hand up?
No question is needed at this time.
Okay. All right, so we're not doing a motion.
Should we throw an old fashioned snow day in once in a while?
Well, I think we're allowed five remote, right? Before we have to do?
Point taken.
If there's no power, yes.
Well, you don't need power to do the paperwork.
So the board approves, so if this, motion got dropped, there was no second. So if the schools can get this out to families this week?
We will.
Because we're in December and snow's coming.
Yeah, the weather does look good for the remainder of this week and all of next week.
You never know.
Agreed, agreed. But long-term forecast still looks favorable for the next two weeks.
All right. All right, and thank everybody.
Yeah.
A lot of work went into that.
A lot of work went into this. The schools did a nice job.
So, all right.
Can, can I, that, not getting a second to support something, does not mean the board doesn't support it?
Correct. They just didn't feel a motion was needed.
Need, okay.
Yep. All right, so now we're on to school staffing.
So the staffing sheet that I think you all have copies of has approvals for athletic and co-curricular nominations. What's fascinating to me, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 people. Out of 20 people who are primarily coaches, only one of them is new to us.
Wow.
And that, you look at the one that has the N in the parentheses, that is really pretty remarkable. So I would, I would again, thank Justin Huff and Mr. Garrity at the middle school as our, our athletic administration, because seeing 20 coaches with only one of them being new is really something. So we would ask for your approval for winter athletics.
All right. By Jared, do, I have a second by Ginny. Any questions before I do roll call? All right, C and N, Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. All right, other business that may legally come before the meeting? No? All right. And our next school board meeting is December 20th, and we do have some non-public tonight. So which one do you want to go into first?
A please.
Okay. So I need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-A32A. The dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
So moved.
By Shane, do I have a second? By Jared, do roll call, Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Oh, you switched it up.
I did, I'm sorry. Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are in non-public, so GTV can come in, break down.